Call this meeting of the Belton Elementary School District Board of Trustees to order. A form of board members is present. Rosie is on her way, so we'll go ahead and start this. One is correct. This meeting has been duly called and I noticed that the meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Urban Meeting Acts, Texas Government Code, Chapter 51. Please join me on this to the fair play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We may have a clean air. We're going to get started with a board workshop and Mr. Jared is going to give us a 2017 bond project update. Jared, if you want to.
I'm actually going to turn it over to Kurt here for this one.
Thank you all. So the first project we're going to talk about is Charter Oak Elementary School. And honestly, this project's been going great. We've got a great contractor onboard and they have sequenced this project so that everything just seems to flow from one task to the next task. And it's been really easy out there on the job site. So when we came back a few months, a month ago, or I came back, I guess, two months ago since I've been here, you know, we looked at the building and they've sequenced on that north side, that fourth and fifth grade wing where they've got the exterior sheathing and the waterproofing, they've got the roofing going on. And if you look a little bit further down, you can see the, you know, the dark blue there which they had all the exterior sheathing on. And if we go all the way down to the last wing, you know, we can see there's metal studs and that's about it. So they started their sequence on that north side and every time they finished a task, they'd get their trades to move to the next section to the next section. And so when we looked at it last time, we've got the interior guts, you know, just the metal framing going up, but nothing else really besides the exterior of the building. And so this time, when we look at it, there's actually a lot going on and unfortunately it's really hard to get good photos of everything that's happened. But on that north side, that fourth and fifth grade wing where all that sheathing was and the waterproofing, they've already got the masonry going on there. And so that has actually gone around most of that fourth and fifth grade wing and is transitioning now towards the gymnasium area. And on the, that north wing, that fourth and fifth grade wing, all the interior walls have been sheathed with the wallboard. We've got the steel frames for the doors and windows have been installed, they've already got them painted. And those trades, as they finish up this section, are going to be hitting that middle section and then the very last wing where the library and the main entrance is. And I'm really hopeful within the next month or two, we'll be able to come back with a nice photo from the front entrance and you'll get to see, you know, that nice procession into the building. And everything seems to be going well. I can't say enough good things about cloud construction and the process with them, but they've made sure that everything keeps on task and made it a lot of easy process for me. Do you guys have any questions on the elementary school? The next project was the Fine Arts Center and, you know, last time we talked about, they were at substantial completion. We had all the finishes and the punch list was going on. And really, the update on this one was your great ribbon cutting that you guys had with everybody there and the great building and the turnout. So I know we're proud of this building and getting this renovated for y'all. Not much to say on this one if there's any questions.
The whole thing is beautiful.
I think I noticed Lake Belton Middle School has choir concert there this week, so it is going to be used quite frequently for fine arts events. It's very nice.
The last project is our large project, the Lake Belton High School. You know, when I started looking at all these photos and I started flipping back and forth between the two, it almost looks like there's not a lot of progress going out there and it's very deceptive when you start looking at it. So just pointing out on this photo here, you know, we've got the orchestra pit down here, we've got the slab port up here, they were starting the grade beams, you've got some stuff going on here, we definitely, football field, you can kind of see where the baseball is, you know, the curb and gutter for the parking lot. And it doesn't look like a lot of work out there. But when you go between this one and here, you look at it, we actually now have all the circulation routes that they've actually graded around the site. So you can actually see where you're going to be driving onsite. We've got the orchestra pit with the slab port in front of it, the backside they've already got, which is actually down here, is all of these grade beams have been ready and are going to be pouring as soon as it stops raining again to get that next slab in there. But the biggest thing that's going to actually change between this board meeting and the next one we presented is all these things right down here are actually tilt wall panels that were cast on top of the existing concrete slab that they are beginning to erect up. And so we will actually have that first shell of the building to actually see the building going up at that point. Besides that, I mean, they are moving quickly from one slab to the next and their trades are just, there's a lot of people out there. And when I do my walks around that 80-acre site, it's quite impressive the amount of people that are out there working. Do y'all have any questions on the high school project?
You can answer that question.
Thank you for that update.
That's it, and we're ready to jump onto the next.
Ready?
Okay. So the next item that you asked us to do is to, or that I was asked to do, is to go back through the capital improvement projects list. And so for many of you, you saw this, we came back in April of this year and had presented a list that informed some projects that occurred over the summer. And if you rewind three years ago, that informed projects like Wall Street Auditorium and Lakewood Elementary and the CTE projects.
Can I add just a little more background? We've, the board has historically had a projects list. In 2015, we had Jared formalize this into this document for us and so that we could have a little bit of an overview of each project with an estimated budget. So those are just estimates that are included and these are items that are brought forward as potential projects. We don't necessarily have the funding to do these, all of these projects, but it's for the board's consideration and discuss, discussion and for you all to be able to prioritize for the future. And some of these projects, like the Fine Arts Center and the Lakewood Gymnasium, end up in bond programs. So there are some projects in here that we may not be able to fund with the monies that we have available now, but however, we may be able to do that in a future project.
Exactly.
Just a little information.
And so after Jared finishes his update, will you give us what your priority would be?
Sure.
Great. So there's the document online, we can get you a copy as well if you'd like to thumb through that as well. But basically, each time we go through the project list and some of them we'll scratch off because they've been completed or they're no longer necessary, or we update them along the way. And we've added a few along the way here as well. So we'll kind of step through each one of these. The fir, or the second sheet in the packet is really a summary sheet of this, this wish list. And it really goes through here, 18 of the projects or, yeah, 15 of the projects, sorry. There's subprojects in there as well. And so we've updated many of the ones towards the end, the few at the beginning have remained the same. What I would point out here is one is, is these are estimated total project costs. So that includes hard cost as well as soft cost for the project. So hard cost would be defined what you pay the contractors. So when we talk about, in particular, when we get back to the gymnasiums, if you're looking at Lakewood and the cost of Lakewood versus here, where that is the hard cost of Lakewood was roughly 2.2 million here, that also includes soft cost. And we'll go over that in more detail here in a little bit. But basically, a summary of all the projects and we'll kind of step through each one of these as we move forward. So project number one is the CTE improvements. And this really started three years ago about looking at how to improve CTE within the district. This is where the automotive tech and the construction technology projects were born out of. But really, it took the opportunity to look at how to best support CTE within the district. And you'll see here at the bottom, there's really three main recommendations is continue with a strong enrollment and strong workforce demand and making sure that CTE is parallel with that. Bringing the CTE pathways is another focus and that was really what brought the Automotive Tech Program to Belton High School. And then as well as continue to evaluate the needs as Lake Belton High School comes on. And now that you've, in essence, doubled a lot of the CTE facilities as well as the educational facilities determine the need as you move forward. The second part of this is really then looking at each one of the programs and we developed a recommendation underneath each category. We'd completed the construction technology and automotive tech, but still looking at options out there for woodworking, ag mechanics, and then health sciences as well and trying to bring those either to updated facilities or new facilities on the high school campus from that standpoint. That's project number one. Project number two is the, taking the paint shop. So if you'll notice, let's see, right here is the auditorium and then we're in the main campus here. This is the small gym that is currently used for gym and kind of multipurpose for New Tech. But then the building directly across the street from New Tech is looking at updating those facilities to provide classroom space. It's kind of used currently as district storage within the space. So that's project number three, or number two. Project number three is then looking at the field houses. So we'll get into this in a little bit, but right now, basically, there's some additional space in these facilities here, which were the old fieldhouse for the locker rooms. This project in particular, number three, is looking at an indoor golf training facility here, being able to convert some of that existing space, basically gut it out and be able to put that in there. Working with the district and you'll see some information in there about multiple ranges. And so we gave him moderate range in here for indoor golf facility. Project number four is focused on the existing gymnasiums. So where we looked at the paint shop, again, here's the auditorium, this is the main administration. So this is the old gymnasium. It's currently used as district storage and then the adjacent kind of classroom wing is not currently occupied. And so this would be the proposal to demolish that facility, put in a new parking lot, lighting, and then that would potentially augment a new entrance to the administration building that would come in here, which leads directly into project number six, which is renovations to the existing administration building. So the improvements were done within the last 10 years to convert this basically from a school campus to administration campus. And then there was a focus then to look at a new secure entry, kind of in line with what we're seeing within the industry, secure entry, restable, being able to check in, raptor people, those type of things. Getting into a new entrance, so kind of directly behind the board chambers here, looking at specific departmental needs and being able to sit down and program, and then ultimately work through wayfinding. So you're not, we'll take two lefts and then right and then the left and you're at the Tiger Room, but be able to get some signage or some color to be able to support that. So a general renovation to this portion of the facility. Project numbers six and seven are improvements to the Belton High School baseball softball fields. So this is basically converting both projects, very similar to what we did for Tiger Stadium. Well, that was already an artificial turf, but converting these from a natural turf field to an artificial turf field. And then there's options for infield and outfield options for both fields within there. And that's the distinguishing cost between the two of those. Project number eight is all to do with tennis. So this is, there was a lot of discussion about how we're supporting tennis within the district. Currently, all middle schools and high school students use the Belton High School campus for tennis. And so there's currently eight courts there. This was a proposal to either add four courts, add two courts and the championship court, or provide middle school courts as well. Some of this will, we'll see some alleviation from the concerns here as Lake Belton High School comes online with 10 courts at that campus there. So that's project number eight. Project number nine is where we start seeing more of the updates here. And so this was a project that we were asked to take a look at that paired really two aspects of Belton High School together. The first was how to address athletics and the growing population at Belton High School and really maximize the use of the existing facilities. And then the second is what to do with orchestra. And really, that's looking towards the future as BHS 9 becomes a middle school again, that is where orchestra is currently held within the facility. So where would that be facilitated? And so we had actually identified multiple options along the way. And then this is one over the summer that David and his crew were able to take a concept that we had generated, worked out with Coach Morgan, to really develop where you see the red square here is develop the existing soccer rooms to fully handle baseball, softball, powerlifting, soccer, and then a, also a guest or visitors' court for Lake Belton High School when that comes online. And then there's still an additional room to be able to support storage within there. So solved one part of the equation. So then the second part of the equation becomes orchestra. And so what you'll see here, there's a yellow dot on the right side of the screen that would represent a new addition directly in front of the band hall. So we'd be able to share some of the storage and office room space there, but then create a new rehearsal hall in front of the band hall. It would snuggle up tight to where the existing sidewalk is, so it would not directly affect in the end, the construct, or the vehicular pathways, but really would be a new addition to be able to support orchestra within that program. So you'll see here on the cost where we've now identified a cost simply for orchestra and then we've noted that the athletic facilities are completed on this one. That was project nine. Ten also was updated here over the summer. So we started nine months ago, 10 months ago now, and met with, do what? Oh, met with district staff to talk about ADA accessibility across the district at the elementary school campuses. And ultimately, it kind of created a bar as we went into Charter Oak Elementary School about what the playground equipment should be, the fall protection material should be shaded, how do you access it? And then ultimately devised a, the chart here that really outlined steps to be able to get into that from how do you get to the equipment? Again, are you shading it? And then the fall protection material. And so the first portion of that was executed and is still wrapping up a few little details here on getting ADA access to each one of the play events within the campuses. So about eight of the campuses are done at this point. We're trying to finish up those last couple here. Again, the rain hasn't been favorable for us, but they are continuing to work with that. We're working with Vicaro on that project. So here you'll notice specifically on the accessible route line, those have all been turned to zero, meaning that they're all there, none are needed at this point. But the rest remain there to be able to get play equipment and those kind of things from there. Number 10. Number 11 is the Leon Heights, Miller Heights, and Southwest Elementary School. So these campuses are some of the older campuses serving the district. And each one of them has a gymnasium very similar to what was at Lakewood Elementary School. So fundamentally, it's a pre-engineered metal building. Generally speaking, it's uninsulated. They have some heating, they have a form of storage, restrooms, and coaches' office within it. And so we were asked of what would it be, what would be required to bring it to be able to provide air conditioning in the spaces? So basically, in April and in May, it gets relatively warm in those spaces. You'll see in kind of the bottom middle photograph, the way that they're able to do it now is natural ventilation. Basically, they open up the overhead doors and the kids are able to play at least underneath shade, but that's where they have gym. These were built 31 years ago for cost of $37,000 to kind of give you, for all three, to give you some perspective. So things have changed a little bit in that time. So what we were asked, when we, when we were asked to really look at these and determine how do we get air conditioning in this? And as we look, school district is really held to a code standard in terms of meeting the International Energy Conservation Code. Basically, you can't just pump cold air into an uninsulated building. So if we were charged with bringing air conditioning in, we would have to increase the thermal envelope of the building, basically provide insulation on the walls and the ceiling. And knowing that it is a gymnasium environment, we would want to make sure that it's durable, that it's not something that balls would deteriorate over time and kind of go through that process. So in essence, we would, we're currently proposing to looking at is rescinding the building. So it'd mean literally taking off the sheet metal, adding insulation on the outside, new vapor barrier, new exterior, and then adding insulation to the roof. It'd mean that we'd have to add in new lighting, address the HVAC, electrical, so it's not just a simple, let me go down and buy a split system and plug it into the wall and make that happen from a professional standpoint. So what we did is go through and price it based on the sizes, so there are roughly 4,000 to 5,000 square foot gymnasiums, which is slightly smaller than the gymnasium that we just built at Lakewood and that's part of the prototypes of High Point of Charter Oak Elementary School, that design as well. But you'll see there's two, two prices here and looking at the top price here, basically it's $550,000 per gymnasium to add air conditioning to those gyms. So it is something that as you look and you compare that roughly $9,000 original construction versus 550, there, there's a little bit of a disparity there. A lot of that is again, trying to bring that back up to code of current code as you're adding air conditioning to that building. So then question comes down, what would happen if you built new? So we just got done, finished building Lakewood Elementary School, so if we duplicated that facility, so that would contain two music classrooms, would contain a gymnasium and restrooms that were apparently very important to the children, be able to integrate those into the design. What we did is look then at the three different sites, where is an opportunity that you could build those? Some are easier, some are a little bit more challenging. For example, Leon Heights has a lot of topography adjacent to it, so there's a little bit of a, you'd have to have more foundation cost in that design. So comparatively, if we built that along with escalation, you'll see down here at the bottom, that is the addition cost would be to build a new freestanding gymnasium that would augment the campus that ranges from three and a half million to 4.2 million dollars at the three campuses there.
That's for a, for a brick building like Lakewood?
That would be, yes ma'am. So that'd be a, Lakewood in particular was a load-bearing CMU block building, insulation, brick on the exterior would mesh, the goal would be to have it architecturally mesh with the existing campus.
So you didn't have a, not, we didn't put an option in here for a new metal building similar to, would that be similar?
It would be similar in cost and we could talk about finishes then on the inside of, a lot of the times you gain some efficiency with the structure, but then you're having to still build walls because you don't want to damage the insulation, those kind of things. So it's not as efficient, whereas on the CTE, on the Automotive Tech Building, that made a lot of sense because we could install plywood to eight feet and call it done, nobody's throwing balls at, you know, at 10 and 12 feet. Any questions on 11, since that was a new one? Okay. Project number 12. So we were then asked at Miller Heights, so this was a 1960, originally constructed in 1963. So what does that make it, 45 years old, or sorry, 55 years old? And was, is one of the oldest schools sporting Belton ISD. And so what we were asked is to, what would it take to refresh the building and kind of give it a new look? We've personally just done this at a high school and really tried to augment the look and the feel and the character of the building. It's what we talked about a lot with Lake Belton High School as well. So really kind of went through and identified there and you'll see kind of four sections of addressing the paint, addressing the flooring, updating the bathrooms, making sure that we're ADA accessible, and then providing some wall protection in there. So really looking at roughly, I think it's $75 a square foot, so roughly $1.5 million to be able to refresh, that would totally refresh the inside of that building there.
And so schedule wise, for a project like that, that's something we could do in the summer?
Yeah.
That was part of the constraint?
Yes, sir.
We did that at the, what was Tyler Elementary, now Beck's, similar project, paint, flooring, P-LAM, when he says wall protection, that's the colored laminate on the walls. And it was done, I believe, all in a summer project and really made a difference for the campus. And that's what we asked Jared to price out. Since you're at a break, could you go back to the orchestra? I didn't quite follow what you're planning to do for storage because I don't, I'm not visualizing sharing a band room with the orchestra room with storage of instruments.
So it wasn't that they were shared, the rehearsal halls aren't shared, but the offices would be shared. So right now, as you walk into the band hall, and let's see, so it'd be kind of this photograph is standing at the wall closest to the road entry. So but kind of behind you are the offices, shared, or an office space and a small storage space, which is opposite of this room right here, which are some of the small ensemble and practice rooms. So literally between the exterior wall and the curb is where the new rehearsal hall would go. But the heavens could be shared, which is the storage up above, and then as well as the offices between the two. So you could potentially have at least one instructor who's able to keep eyes on both spaces.
Will there be, will there be practice rooms in the orchestra?
So it's not something that we currently had planned. I know that there are some currently in the school right now, so we would not be augmenting those. It is something that we could definitely look at.
So there's not been any design work done. This is just a broad overview. And so this would, the orchestra is, I will tell you, is one of my priorities because there is no place for orchestra when Lake Belton High School opens. And we, it's a very important program at the high school. We have a number of students in orchestra and it seems to make sense to me that this is a good place for it, close to the band hall in the Fine Arts Center, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One final question.
Yes.
Back to the gymnasiums, the renovation versus the addition?
Yes, sir.
The renovations for these, would that be a summer project also or would it take longer than that?
You could probably get it done in the summer because you're really, literally rescinding the building and you're not affecting a lot of the footprint. So it'd just be going through that process, that should be relatively easy. So I think the other point, and you'll, you'll see that there's a little note underneath the images, is that the, when we talk about the half million dollars, that is literally touching the skin of the building. It's not updating the restrooms, updating the storage or any of the other finishes within there. So there are constraints on there of everybody, as soon as you get, well, can you add this and can you add that, that those aren't currently included in the design. So in the last project sheet was project number 13 and we were asked to look at improving the Tiger Stadium press box. And so this, press box had been updated in the last, it appeared 10 to 20 years timeframe. And so in that, since that timeframe, had really been update, or the thing, the industry has changed in how sports are, are used from a, how your coaching, how your spec, how your scouts are coming along. And so we are seeing that shift in the press box mentality. And so I had the opportunity to meet Coach Morgan onsite and we walked through the facility and really talked through his needs. And so I would divide it in two things, two parts. As one, you have the home side, which is the pictures that you see on the screen. And that would handle the home, it'd handle the visitors, the officials and some of the radio. And then recently, I think in the last year, they've improved the visitor's side to be able to handle the visitors' coaches and the visitors' radios on that side. So we're, there are two press boxes there. So on the home side, you'll see a list here at the top that would, I would represent as the program, this section right up here, that really speaks to the number of people and the location of where we would propose them from. The coaches, the broadcasters, press, we'd have restroom, there's video platforms, there's scouts, VIP spaces, and then announcers. And so usually what we're seeing now is that you have a row of individuals in the front and then a row behind them because you're putting more and more people within the press box from that standpoint. I would say one of the challenges of this current press box is the actual depth of, of it, is that it's probably about eight to 10 feet right now. We're seeing now where they're getting closer to like 15 feet. So you can literally have an individual room. You don't want to be able to hear a conversation to this guy and, oh, did you talk about my son? Oh, they're going to run this play. And you know, there's become this whole secret because apparently calling plays is, you know, you don't want to let the other team know what you're doing along the way. So what we looked at doing is then, how does this start to lay out? Again, we haven't gone through the planning perspective, but in essence, in order to make this happen and really refresh the, the interior that we would propose in essence, gutting the entire inside and then rebuilding it to, to make it appropriately sized and layout and work through that, that space. So relatively, or when we look at that from a cost perspective, that's roughly about a half million dollars to the $540,000. My concern would be is that's really staying within the exterior envelope of the building. And then as the industry continues to evolve and sports continue to evolve, will that serve the long-term needs for the next 10 years, 20 years? Or is it something that, you know, we should look at expanding the footprint, which is of course more money, but it would better serve the long-term district needs from that perspective? So just for a starting place and a point of conversation right now, half a million dollars to be able to get it to meet today's standards and today's needs from that perspective. Any questions on that? Any questions on that one?
I actually have one question, but it's not on that one. It goes back to, and this is just something to bring up for the board, but it goes back to projects six and seven, which were the, the turf fields for the baseball and softball. Does the board need to kind of consider, I would say removing, but putting that down lower on the list? We kind of accomplished that goal at the new high school. We're putting turf on those fields, which gives the flexibility when we have the weather that we have right now. Coach Morgan, your opinion on it? I mean?
That was one of the selling points on the, doing the turf at Lake Belton is as a district and as an athletic staff, we can coordinate that when we have two schools in operation that, you know, Lake Belton gets it from four to five fifteen and VHS gets it from five thirty to six forty-five and we can watch that even for games.
Right.
I would agree with that.
I like to think too though about these two, of these two fields is, you know, the amount of work that we had to do underneath at the football field. It makes these costs for the baseball field, we have to do the same thing engineering-wise, and that makes the cost three times more than it ought to be.
Right.
So it really kind of, it's really more money.
Cost prohibitive.
Yes, it's very cost prohibitive, I think.
And I'm not saying we remove it, but I just don't know if, we kind of accomplished it by doing what we did. Because I, we, I don't think we could ever afford to do what we did at the high school for that field. You know, we just.
So the last two, and I'll mention these real quick and then open it up for any additional questions. We don't currently have project sheets for them, which is project number fourteen was identified here at the beginning, which was really about safety and security within the district, and that's a TBD right now. And that's really to identify that there, we're continuing to support the district and evaluating the best options in safety and security today, is that the conversation continues to be heightened and elevated as conversations continue to happen. We've taken the best opportunity with Lake Belton High School and Charter Oak Elementary School to really look at locks, video surveillance, intrusion detection, those passive and active systems to be able to help meet the everyday needs, but ultimately really waiting on the state's recommendation with Governor Abbott really jumping into that and trying to make a, a strong thrust here in legislative session. So we'll, we'll see what happens from that.
Yeah, I had Jared add that, and we don't have any specifics yet. Of course Pete and Doug have been evaluating all of our facilities, but I've heard things like fencing and magnetic card reader retrofitting for doors. And so I'd like that placeholder there for us for the future. That's why I see that.
And then the final one is fifteen, which is the swim center. And we did reissue the report in April, but that was really the evaluation that was conducted three years ago on the swim center. And it, there's currently a, a pre-engineered metal structure over the top, and it was replacement improvement of that structure. And so there's various options. These were the three that were the most popular received by the board at the time, and we've carried, continued to carry those forward. And as, as with all the other projects, we have the construction cost, we have the total project cost, which also includes escalation that I've made current to today. So just as you're aware, as you go back and look, the numbers are different. There, we're six months down the line is part of the reason line. With that, that is the report that we have for today for the capital improvement projects and would welcome any additional questions that y'all have.
I don't think we have any additional questions, but thank you for that report. Lots to be done. All of these things cost money, so it's good that we're prioritizing and I, I like the fact that we're going to do the orchestra piece, so we have that on the list.
Well, I want to, yeah, orchestra is high priority, so I wanted to ask you all if we could have Jared move forward with design of that facility. So we do the, the financial report that Jennifer provided in the packet. There's about a million dollars left in bond funding from a previous bond that would pay for half of that, depending on the cost after we get through the design process. But if we move forward with that, you want to speak to the timeline on that?
So when we started speaking timeline and looking at that, one of the challenges, to me, there's two main challenges. One is it's right at the front door of Belton High School. And so how do we address construction and safety and everything going from that standpoint? And then as well as we're working with existing facilities and existing vehicular access, nothing insurmountable, but it just adds some challenges in terms of the construction window. So we want to make sure the contractor has adequate time. So we were roughly thinking that somewhere from the first quarter of next year through probably the third quarter of next year would be a design and bidding window. And then we would basically give the contractor somewhere between ten and twelve months to construct the facility with the goal is if the transition happens, Lake Belton High School comes online.
When?
When, when, when Belton, like, like Belton High School comes online. VHS nine becomes the middle school and Belton High School then becomes full ninth through twelfth grade that the, the orchestra room needs to be available August of 2020, which seems like a long way away, but it comes a lot faster than you think.
Is the dance area, the magic bell area, is it going to be affected? I saw a picture of it on there.
So right now, no. That was one of the options that we had, had looked at, moving orchestra to there and then dance out to the locker rooms or the field house area. And ultimately decided that the height of those other spaces weren't conducive to dance or conducive to orchestra, a lot because of Highline or throwing the girls for cheer, that kind of stuff that is available in that current space. So there's actually no change there currently.
Dr. Kinkanen, the, the priority, the orchestra, is that dealing with, stemming from the numbers of students involved or?
Number of students and the fact that the Belton High School nine will return to being a middle school when Lake Belton High School opens in the fall of 2020. And so orchestra will be displaced and we don't have a home for them when that happens. And so we, you know, we didn't start our orchestra program until two thousand and seven, and it grew, and it grew, and it grew. And when we moved into the nine, we had that, the band hall there that became orchestra. And that has been its home, but now it, we'll need that, obviously need that band hall for middle school band at Belton Middle School. So, so that was one priority. The other thing that I would like to move forward with, and I'm not asking for approval tonight, but we do have some, a need here at this building. I don't see the, us being able to do this complete administration renovation at nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but we have approximately eighteen hundred employees in the district and we have one entrance to this building right now. And for confidentiality and privacy of our employees, I would like to make this back hallway an HR entrance. Todd and his staff are divided currently. Part of them are over on this hall and a kind of a makeshift office and the other employees are in the front hallway. And that would allow us some more space for the business office and some other things that we need up front and give us some private places for personnel issues. And we have some money in the budget for special projects, a little bit of contingency money. David looked at that and it would be up to a hundred thousand dollars to be able to accomplish that. But I, I don't see us with the other student needs being able to do a full renovation of this building anytime in the future, so I'd like to.
And that, what you're suggesting is their plan to make it safer, you know, the security concerns?
For the, this building as well. We have some of those needs as well. There would be a receptionist area at this door and another entry, but that doesn't address vestibules or, well, there is a vestibule in the plan on this end of the building, but it doesn't address the other end of the building. But it, it'll, it accomplishes the goal of Todd being able to take care of our staff and some of those privacy issues that we have. And we do get people stacked up at the front with parents and employees mixed and deliveries, and it is a busy place if you come up and see. And there are some things that are just confidential and we, we're struggling with that in this facility. So I'd like to do, to make those changes within the budget that we have already adopted. And of course, everything else, you know, is like a Christmas list. We want it all, but, you know, it's, well, we're just going to have to keep chipping away at it like we've been doing over the years. And we've done a lot. We should be proud of that, but there, there's, we're growing and you can see that in the wish list.
Yeah, I've been spending quite a bit of time this year at the tennis facility with the tournaments on Thursdays, and we really are lagging behind most other districts. And seating, just the overall experience at the tennis facility is just not very good. And adding those two courts, I understand that ten is optimal for tournaments, putting on big tournaments, and that would help them generate money on their own. But, yeah, we definitely, the tennis is, it's just not very comfortable. It's not, you're looking right into the west sun where the bleachers are in the evenings and those trees hold mosquitoes. It's, it's really not a very pleasant experience, but.
Tennis is, has been on the list a while, and it's costly too, to do, to accomplish that.
Let me step into a can of worms here potentially. Back to the swim center. With, with what's been looked at in the past with the swim center, does that adequately support both BHS and Lake Belton High School? Or do we, like, if, if we do what we did before, do, do we still have a mess? Being able to support both?
Well, depends on your definition of a mess. But we, we think we can accommodate all the teams in the swim center, but our numbers will grow. And so it will become more challenging over time. And we do have some concerns about the facility. Like, that's a large ticket item that the, we do need to address. We don't have the funding at this time to do that, but it does, it, it does need to be addressed as soon as we can.
You want to keep it state of the art because it's beautiful.
Yeah, well, it need, it needs a building around it. So the soft, I've, I've lost the language of the soft structure that's around that facility, but, but it is a concern. We've had that looked at in the past and that's the reason this is on the list. And we do want to take care of it. It would probably need to be a bond program project, or if we have some funds available when we get to the end of this bond program, that would be a really good project to knock off the list.
All right, so my, my crazy gears are turning here.
Keep going.
My, my what-if gears. I mean, what if it wasn't just the school facility, right? And it was a community facility and it was a joint partnership between the school and one of the cities? I'm not going to suggest which one, right? But, you know, that really could be something bigger, right? Yeah, I don't know.
We'd love a partnership for a swimming pool.
Yeah.
It's just that, you know, finding the partner who has the capacity to do it and the desire to do it would be a challenge, but it would be a fun project if you could get someone to do that with you.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Jared? No, we're good. Thank you so much for that update. We'll just move right on with attendance boundaries update, but Dr. Kinkanen.
This is really quick. I know we have a closed session that we need to, to conduct pretty quickly before the six o'clock public hearing, but I just wanted to offer you an opportunity to visit about attendance boundaries process, answer any questions you have. We did have the last meeting, I thought, went really well with thought exchange program being introduced to share ideas. We will follow up with that next week, next Monday at the next meeting. And we have a goal, we, remember, we have five sets of maps that we're currently looking at. We have a goal to get us down to two sets of maps at the next meeting and then come back early November for the last meeting and hopefully move that to one. So I think we can do it. I think we can close in on it a little bit at this next meeting. So just wondered if you had any questions or thoughts about how we're, how it's working.
I think it's working well.
Okay.
What you're doing with the meetings, I think it's, it's issues on the table. Good dialogue in the, in the group that we had, good dialogue. There were, Coach Morgan was involved. There were several others that were there that are part of the school district. I think it's a great thing that you're doing in getting the, getting the public out and getting everybody's ideas on the table.
Great.
I'm interested to see what the results of the app are. There was a thought app where we could share information via the app, so I'm interested to see what the results are.
Michelle is, will, will plan to present that to you on Monday.
Yeah, I think Templeton is worth every penny there. Amazing, all the technology. You know, we had the lady the other night ask a kind of tough question about streets that Lake are around Leon Heights, how it was going to affect those streets. And, I mean, instantly they could go up there and they plugged it in and boom, I mean, her question was answered. I, I think that was really neat. I think having them involved in this with the technology is neat.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, the board will go into closed session. Texas government code, subchapters D and E, deliberations about real property, Texas government code, section five fifty-one, point zero seven-two, consultation with attorney, Texas government code, section five fifty-one, point zero seven-one, and personnel, Texas government code, section five fifty-one, point zero seven-four. We will return. Okay, at this time, the board reconvened and opened session. We are going to go into a public hearing regarding the 2018 school financial integrity rating system of first reports. So come on down, Ms. Jennifer.
So good evening, everyone, Board of Trustees, community members. Welcome to our public hearing to discuss our 2018 schools' first financial accountability rating systems results. This year's rating is based on information from the sixteen seventeen fiscal year. Sorry, excuse me. So the first system, the financial integrity rating system of Texas was adopted during, in nineteen ninety-nine, during that legislative session, and it was authorized in two thousand and one. The information from first or to derive the rating from first is based on district staff and student as well as financial data that's reported to TEA via the Public Education Information Management System, or PENS, and audited financial data that is submitted from our, with our external auditors. There have been two major changes to the first system since the implementation. One was finalized in August twenty fifteen and the other was just recently in August of twenty eighteen, so just a couple of months ago. And what the changes in twenty eighteen will do is increase the number of indicators in the first rating system from fifteen to twenty. And it will add the additional targets associated with fund balances, with fund balance and variances in budget to actual revenues as well as ADA projections. These modifications, in my opinion, are going to make it much more difficult to achieve a, a perfect score. And it's also designed to make the first system a little bit more rigorous. These changes will be implemented by TEA, beginning with the rating year twenty twenty-one, and it will be based on financial data from nineteen twenty fiscal year. The first was created in an effort to provide a mechanism to measure financial performance. These goals include monitoring the quality of finances as well as measuring the level of funds allocated to direct instruction and evaluating financial management decisions, improving the management of district financial resources, and of course, increasing financial accountability. District ratings are based on fifteen indicators, as I previously mentioned, and those indicators are compiled to assign the financial accountability ratings of A, B, C, or F. And A is the top score, which is a superior rating, and a district must achieve greater than ninety points. And F would be considered substandard achievement. There are three systems or three categories of indicators associated with first. The first five indicators are considered critical indicators. The next several are solvency indicators, and then the last few are financial competence indicators. The most crucial of the, of the categories are the critical indicators because these five indicators must be passed in order to be eligible to receive the, the number grade for the first rating. Failure to meet any of the critical indicators would result in an automatic failure of first. And these five, first five indicators are all based on yes, no answers. Indicator one is the first critical indicator, and it ensures that the AFR or the annual financial report is filed in a timely manner. As a, as an August thirty-first fiscal year-end district. As an August 31 fiscal year-end district, we have until February 28 to file our annual financial report for FIRST consideration. Even though the report by TEA rules is due on January 28, FIRST gives us an additional 30 days. Indicator two requires that a district receive an unmodified, or in other words, a clean opinion from our auditor. And you have to have a clean opinion in order to pass indicator two. It's broken into two parts, 2A and 2B. And although 2B addresses material weaknesses, as long as you pass the 2A and get a clean opinion on your FIRST report, you will pass indicator two. Indicator three, make sure that the district has paid all debt obligations. Indicator four, looks at whether TRS and IRS and other payment entities, or other payroll entities, have been paid in a timely manner. And then indicator five, monitors district assets to ensure that they exceed liabilities. High-growth districts, excuse me, high-growth districts like Belton ISD, we automatically pass this indicator, because our student membership has changed by more than 7% over five years. So as I previously discussed, these first five indicators, we passed them all. So I'm going to move to indicator six, which is the first of our solvency indicators. Indicator six is one that measures how long after the end of the school year did we have, could we have gone without receiving additional revenue? And this indicator shows that Belton had 115 days of cash on hand. The requirement to receive full points is 90, so we received full points there. Indicator seven measures our debt ratio, which basically assesses whether we had sufficient short-term assets to pay our short-term liabilities at the end of the year. We have a 13.9 ratio, which far exceeds the required 3 in this indicator. So we receive full points there. Indicator eight is asking if our debt exceeds our assets. This indicator recognizes, again, that high-growth districts will have additional costs, maybe some additional debt, as we open and staff new campuses. So fast-growth districts automatically pass this indicator as well, with full points. Indicator nine asks, did you spend more money than you earned? Belton ISD did not, so we received full points for indicator nine. Indicator 10 measures the district's ability to make debt and principal, debt principal and interest payments during the year. The minimum target is 1.2 for this ratio, and we have a 2.07. So Belton's debt coverage ratio far exceeds what is required to receive the maximum points. Indicator 11 measures the percentage of the budget spent on administration. Our ADA is over 10,000, so we are in that top-tier category, and we met the required ratio to receive full points for this indicator. And indicator 12, we look at student-to-staff ratio. And again, our enrollment did not incline, did not decline, so we were able to receive full points for indicator 12. Indicator 13 looks at the quality of financial data submitted to PENS compared to the data that is submitted to TEA in our annual financial report from our auditors. We had a small variance, which I'm going to say is a result of rounding. It was .01%, so we received full points for this indicator. Indicator 14 looks at material noncompliance in grants and federal funds, which is slightly different from the first, or indicator two, which talked about material weaknesses. But Belton ISD had none for indicator 14, so we received full points. Indicator 15 asks if the district had to submit or request a payment plan to repay funds that TEA may have overpaid us in our FSP allotment. They didn't, we did not have this issue, so we received full points there. So as a result, you can see that Belton received a perfect score and a superior rating for 2018. At this point, since this is a public hearing, I will open it up to questions and comments, but I would also like to remind you that the Annual Financial Management Report is available. Should you like to view that? We have copies available for you, as well as it being included in the board packet that is available online. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, I appreciate that. So our next item on our agenda is recognitions. Go ahead and give you the disclaimer here. If you have a student that's about to receive an award, please come up and take lots of pictures of them, embarrass them. These are moments that you can never recapture. We want you to come up and join them. If you're a staff member and you have students up here, and your student is being recognized, come up with them and join in that picture. So Ms. Elizabeth, get us started, please.
Thank you so much. These are definitely BISD moments worth capturing. Thank you. First up, we have a Good Citizenship Proclamation from the City of Temple. Marissa Todd, a freshman at Belton New Tech High School at Wasco, was recognized by the City of Temple Mayor Tim Davis and Councilman Mike Pilkington with an official Good Citizen Proclamation. Marissa, go ahead and come up here. Late last month, Marissa stopped to render aid to a neighbor during a significant rainstorm, and the story of her kind and thoughtful actions was shared by the lives that she actually touched. Her actions exhibited many of the principles of character that her campus emphasizes. Congratulations, Marissa. And Marissa's parents are here, and they were with us last week at the campus when the mayor actually presented the proclamation. Congratulations, Marissa, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Next up, we have National Merit Commended Scholars. The National Merit Program has recognized Belton High School seniors Marcus Aik.
Yay, Marcus.
Brayden McDonald. And Peter Morris, along with New Tech senior Sarah Batson, as commended students for 2019. Each year, more than 1.5 million high school students take the PSAT. Of those, just 50,000 qualify for the National Merit Program, including 34,000 selected as commended students. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
And this is just the first portion of their recognition parents. They're going to just move to the side and stay up here. We have a little bit more after this. Marcus, just go ahead and shove on over. Thank you. We have more. In addition, the College Board has recognized Belton High School seniors Jacob Jimenez and Mariah Montgomery, along with Belton New Tech senior Maya Borchart as Hispanic Scholars Hispanic juniors that take the PSAT can apply for academic recognition as a part of the College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program. Every year, the NHRP recognizes about 5,000 of the 250,000 students who take the test. While there is not a scholarship competition associated with this designation, colleges and universities do use this program to identify academically exceptional Hispanic and Latino students. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And now the second part. I'd like to invite Dr. Kinkanen and our two high school principals, Mrs. Ross, Mr. Smith. Let's rearrange yourselves by high schools.
So the taller folks, taller folks stand up here. There you go.
So I want to say something first. Congratulations to these students. This is a really big deal. These students scored very high on the PSAT. Some of them missed being a National Merit Scholar by maybe one or two questions, right? I know a couple of you for sure. This number has grown from the number of students we honored last year. This is one of our priorities, and I am very excited about these scholars. These are our superintendent scholars. They worked hard. They studied in Khan Academy, and they took multiple practice tests, probably, what do you think, guys, eight, 10 tests, practicing to get the kind of scores that they got? So maybe, is it more, Marcus? Yes, how many more? 13 practice tests. So you don't get scores as high as these students do without working for them. And they worked for them, and we're really proud of them. So congratulations to our superintendent scholars, yeah. So, one of the things we started last year was to have banners made with their names on them to place in the halls of the campuses. And so I'll start with New Tech. We have a banner for our students at New Tech High School.
So high school, just a tad bit, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, that's a big deal. Cool.
Says, "Good Charlie."
There you go. There you go. Yes.
You want to take the test more than 13?
With the banners or just them? Okay, let's, we want to get one more big group picture. And while Robert's getting another group picture, I was going to share that this is just the start of recognizing these students. You'll be seeing a lot more. We've taken some pictures. We've done some different items that we'll start sharing out on social media. And our great partners at Lamar Advertising, we're working with them to also ensure that each student gets a digital billboard in recognition of their achievements.
Wow. And they will get to go wherever they want to go to college, I'm pretty sure, with scores like they had, so we're excited for them.
Okay, y'all can leave now. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Going to let everybody clear out of there. Yeah. Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
No, only a few of us.
Another group equally is worthy of recognition. This October is National Principals Month. This recognizes the essential role that principals play in making a school great. The success of Belton ISD as a district is a direct result of the hard work our campus principals do on behalf of our students and staff, and it is worthy of recognition. I'm going to start calling up the principals for their picture. Belton ISD principals are Sue Banfield of Belton Early Childhood School, Elizabeth McMurtry, wasn't able to be here with us tonight, from Chisholm Trail Elementary, Amy Armstrong, High Point Elementary, Marcy Beck, Leon Heights Elementary, Judy Schiller, Lakewood Elementary, Jennifer Connor, Miller Heights Elementary, Rebecca Vaughn, Pertle Elementary, Stacy Cox, Southwest Elementary, Julie Manley, Sparta Elementary, Michelle Tisch, Tarver Elementary, Chris Hobson, Lake Belton Middle School, Joe Brown, North Belton Middle School, Kevin Taylor, South Belton Middle School, Jill Ross, Belton High School, and Ben Smith at Belton New Tech. The coordinator of the District Alternative Education Program is Emilio Oliveras. Now it's a test of how the principals get themselves arranged.
Before you guys sit down, I just want to really just tell you, each of you, thank you for your strong leadership skills. You make each of our campuses have this very unique culture, but you keep the main thing the main thing. You make sure that each one of our kids are a winner. Really appreciate you for all that you do and all that you offer this district.
And I bragged on them at the conference in Austin, at the School Board Conference. They deserve a lot of bragging on. We have some of the best administrators in our school district, and they're on the front lines taking care of our kids, and they have a really hard job. And we really do appreciate them. So thank you very much for the work that you do for our schools. You are appreciated. Yeah, thank you. And I've been treating them to lunch this month. So we've had a good time visiting in small groups, and it's been good, so.
Tonight, we also wanted to acknowledge Kristy Shepherd. Kristy Shepherd is being recognized by the Temple Rotary Club for her outstanding service to Belton ISD. She is our digital media teacher at Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. And she is in her 10th year in education, second year in Belton ISD. Ms. Shepherd's knowledge of the industry and innovative approach to film design has provided students a quality, memorable learning experience. Under her leadership, her audio and video production students were able to win a state championship in UIL film in the spring of 2018. Belton New Tech High School at Wasco students competed against some of the best high schools in the state, including Plano West, Deer Park, Allen, and Far San Juan Alamo. As a result of the student's success, even more students are excited about being involved in the film program. Ben Smith, principal at Belton New Tech High School at Wasco, stated, "Ms. Shepherd is loved by her students as well as her colleagues. Her commitment to facilitate student achievement and her passion to challenge students, to challenge her students to excel through their own creativity are reasons why her students are already in the process of developing scripts for this year's UIL Film Championship." Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Shepherd. Appreciate it.
And they're entering three contests this year. We're hoping for three state championships. No pressure. Three wins.
And now we're ready for our Big Red Community Partner of the Month. One of the key elements of Belton ISD's comprehensive approach to safety and security is training. Each year, staff is provided with various opportunities for professional development that address all aspects of creating safe learning environments. In partnership with the Central Texas Regional Advisory Council, or the RAC, the district is implementing a series of additional hands-on training lessons taught or facilitated by emergency services professionals and first responders. Go ahead and start making your way up. Last week, all district high school staff was trained in life-saving measures addressed in the National Stop the Bleed Training Program. And plans are underway, and I know several campuses have already booked, including Ms. Becky Vaughn and Pertle, for campus-based staff training at all the middle schools and elementary schools. In addition to training, the Central Texas RAC has also been instrumental in the district purchasing and installing additional emergency response materials and strategic locations within the facilities across Belton ISD. Representing the Central Texas RAC for this month's recognition as Big Red Community Partner is Executive Director Christine Reeves and Board Secretary Elizabeth Hicks. And I believe, Elizabeth, you're a parent, too, of Belton students.
I am a parent.
Excellent. Where do your students go?
Lakewood.
Lakewood, excellent. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to Christine, and we just really appreciate it. Christine taught 300 high school teachers Stop the Bleed. Now, that was a big task, and she did a beautiful job of doing that, and has been so easy to work with, and will help us continue to expand that training opportunity to others. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We'll wait for Ms. Norwood to take a seat. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, to consider and take appropriate action. Is there any item?
Public comments.
I'm sorry, public comments. I'm so sorry. I don't see that there were anybody that signed up. Ms. Burns, is there anybody? Thank you. We'll proceed to consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any board member would like to pull for? Is there any item on the consent agenda that any board member would like to pull for further discussion? No? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Got a first? Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Montgomery. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Next up, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple of items this evening. First, I wanted to let you know that we're moving forward with the implementation of a new safety communications tool called Anonymous Alerts. Given you a little bit of information about that already. Doug Taylor, our safety coordinator, has reviewed the new app-based reporting system with DEWIC, which is a committee based primarily teachers with some community members and parents. He's also reviewed that system with our district safety committee. And both committees liked the system and felt good about moving forward with the implementation of anonymous alerts. This is an app that's currently used by about 130 districts across the state. It's designed to be used by students, staff, parents, and community members. It can be downloaded directly from iTunes, Google Play, or from the Chrome Store. And we are planning to push it out to all district devices, replacing our existing tip-line system that we have in place. It is designed to improve safety by empowering our students and others to speak up and say something when there is a safety concern. It is anonymous. It allows for one-way and/or two-way anonymous encrypted communications between submitters, administrators, and district safety staff that we designate to receive those messages. And we've been working to set up those administrators who will receive messages. The user or the submitter has the option to remain anonymous, or they can reveal their identity when they submit a report. They can also attach a screenshot or a photo to their report to provide more information to us. In addition to being able to submit tips and safety concerns through the app, we will also have the availability to do so online on our website. So we're currently training our administrators. We have training sessions set up for this week on the program, and then we plan to pilot it for a few days at South Belton Middle School before rolling it out across the district. We're very excited about this. We do know that districts' campuses who have used it have had good luck with getting information reported to them. And we know that, say, our safety does start with our students, right? And they're a big factor in keeping our campuses safe. And so we want them to be able to submit things. The app has some other capabilities that will help us with safety as well. We'll be training on those, including staff members being able to report things and assist us with locking campuses down and that kind of thing. So we're not quite there yet, but we're on it, and we'll be rolling that out soon. And so I wanted to let you know where we are at this time with that system. Yeah, question?
So, once you guys get that going and rolling, can we get a little demo?
Absolutely. We can come back and do a demo. You can download it on your phone and your devices as well. Doug Taylor is our expert right now. He's provided several demos of that to us, to committees, and then we'll be training our staff on it. So happy to do that for the board. And you two could use the app if you so choose, or the online system. So I'll keep you posted on the progress of that. You heard a little bit about Stop the Bleed training that was held last Monday. That was in collaboration with Central Texas Regional Advisory Council. You met Christine Reeves. But what I wanted to mention there is that we had health providers from all over the area who joined in to assist. That training was done with a healthcare provider to every 10 people who were trained. So we had people here from Baylor Scott and White Health, the Belton Police Department, the Belton Fire Department, Premier Health, and some others. And I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't get all of those correct, but is there one you'd like to mention, Christine?
Acadian.
Say it again?
Acadian.
Acadian ambulance services. So that was a great community effort to train our teachers. They did learn about how to stop life-threatening bleeding, as did I, by either packing a wound or using a tourniquet. And for many of our staff members, that was the first time they'd actually touched a tourniquet and to see how to operate that, and for me as well. So it was really good training. Our staff really received that well. So we're just thankful for the RAC for being able to provide that. We do have middle school training coming up on November the 12th, and I've asked all of our elementary principals as well to get with Christine, and let's get a time scheduled to do that in all of our schools. So our first goal is our staff, and then we want to come back and look at secondary students being able to learn how to use a tourniquet and stop bleeding for a life, you know, in a life-threatening situation. So good progress on that. Okay, finally, just a little bit of an enrollment update. We're almost to Snapshot, which is the last Friday in October every year. We're currently sitting at approximately 11,900 students. We were projected at 11,963, so we didn't quite make that. In terms of ethnicity in our projections, we're pretty similar to last year. About 53% of our students are white, about 33.5% are Hispanic, about 6.6% are African-American. And then we still have approximately 4% of our students who are classified as one, or as two or more races. We continue to refine our data for economically disadvantaged students, which takes some work because we count on information that we get in applications for free and reduced lunch. And sometimes it takes us a while to track those down. At this time, it appears that we will be about 44%, which is slightly down from last year when we were sitting at about 45.4%. I'll provide you with an update on that when we get our official numbers at the end of the month, but slightly down there. And then both of our, both our special education and our gifted and talented percentages have shown a slight increase over last year. I don't have those numbers for you this evening, but fairly similar, but slightly bumped. And so that's the Snapshot data, and we will continue to refine it, and I'll give you some additional information on what was submitted to TEA. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kincaid. Next up, Dr. Les Smith will talk with us about district culture development initiatives.
Good evening. I am excited tonight to talk with you about some of the district cultural development initiatives that we have going on in our district. And all of these are really centered around our district priority for, making sure we create supportive campus cultures which prioritize safety, security, and inclusive environments. And this priority captures a lot of work that we're doing in the district. And tonight, what I want to do is talk about just three of those areas. And this involves safety, security, and inclusive environments, both physically and also emotionally. So often, when we talk about the demographics of our district, to talk to you from a district standpoint. So we might tell you that we're 45% less socioeconomic, and we give just like those high district numbers. But tonight, I'm going to do a little bit different and kind of step inside a classroom and what that might look like at the classroom level. And of course, there's a lot of variables that go into our classrooms. But if you picture on average a classroom of 25 students, and you think about those little gingerbread clasps in there, you would see that this first slide represents ethnicity. And that puts into play the diversity in a classroom. So you might have two African-American students, one Asian student. You would have possibly, what's, three, four, eight Hispanic students and the remaining white students. And so just from a classroom perspective, that's what the demographics as a whole could translate to. Also, our demographics, when we look at our ethnicities, we're almost even with our number of male and female students. And so you should see in an average classroom, you might see one boy more than girls if all things were equal. But this is through the lens of our classroom teachers. When you think about special programs, and I think this slide is what's really hits home for me, when you talk about inclusion and diversity in a classroom, because within a classroom, we have a teacher that's trying to meet all of the individual needs of our students. And our classrooms are not homogeneous. They are not, every kid needs the same thing. And so in a classroom, we might have two English language learners. We might have two students that are identified as 504, which means that they have a disability that needs support. They may have some modifications in place, but maybe not at the level that they're under a special education umbrella. Under a special education, they might have a specific IEP in place, might have a behavioral plan. We might have a whole sea of students that are not in a specific program, but yet they also bring to the table many needs. They may just not be specifically identified yet. We will also have some students that are gifted. And so within that classroom, there's a lot going on and a lot of needs our teachers are meeting. Also, through the lens of a teacher, is our economics. And as you can see, we're at about 38%. So not quite the half of the class might be identified as economically disadvantaged and have some challenges or struggles that come with those. We're actually a little bit higher than that. We're a little bit higher, right. This was based on numbers from, I guess, last year, and it must have been not finalized yet. Sorry about that. So a little bit higher. But still, it represents the variation in our classrooms and what those needs look like. And so with that, we are challenged to meet all those needs and to make sure every individual student's needs are met. And so there's three ways right now that we would say that we're doing some intentional work in our cultural environments and addressing this. The first would be through design thinking. And so we were fortunate to have some presenters come from the O'Brien Group for our admin training this fall, and they talked about design thinking. And this is an example of one of the prototypes, and this actually team was addressing, "How might we empower students to assist in creating safe, bully-free environments?" Design thinking is a process. It's going to challenge our administrators to find new solutions to problems. We don't have the same group of students that we had just 10 years ago or 20 years ago, and we're constantly challenged to think of new and invent of ways to address problems within our system and how we might improve those. I was very fortunate to be a part of a group that just returned yesterday from Stanford. We were able to deepen our knowledge of design thinking, and it's centered out of the Stanford D-School. And it's a process. It's not about just sitting around the table and thinking up a new way. It's a process where the first component is that you empathize, and you go out and you conduct what are called empathy interviews. And this is a critical piece of the, of the work, because what you're doing is you're going out and talking to, when you think about those visuals of our demographics, how do different students feel in a school? How do they see that problem? How do teachers see the issue at hand? How do administrators see it? And you're collecting all of these different points of view to then define kind of what your problem is or area you're working on. And then, of course, my favorite step, which is challenging for some folks, is to ideate. And at ideate, you just think of as many crazy, out-of-the-box, possible ways you might, might go at solving this problem, and really thinking through all of your possibilities. And then you try to come to some consensus, and you prototype it, and then you test it out. And this is important because we're facing new challenges. We can't keep doing school. We can't keep doing things the way we've always been doing them. And so we're going to start this work with our principals. We started a little bit in the, like I said, in the fall, and we'll be bringing this to our principal learning. Our team that attended the training, it was myself, Vicki Dean, Rochelle, and our two principals, Elizabeth McMurtry and Julie Manley, we will replicate our three-day training this summer. It is best to do it in a three-day process, so we'll replicate that with our teams, and then, and we'll just continue the work on. We've already started some of it, just based off of our fall training, and so I wanted to kind of give you two examples. One I'm specifically proud of is the ISD Connect. And this came from a CNI meeting where one of our new folks that really works closely with our teachers said, "You know, I'm not always sure that we are getting, we have training, and we have very specific training, but when do we just bring together teachers who are natural leaders and influencers in their environment, but maybe not officially in a leadership role?" So we have training for principals, we have training for coaches, but this is that teacher that's out there and constantly leading. And so we have, so we started ideating about that and thinking about different things we could do and what we might, you know, how might we, we address this. And what we've come up with are, is a cohort model. For six meetings, we'll have three in the fall and three in the spring, but it's through the cohort where we're going to bring them together and do some activities to help grow them as leaders in their environment. We're not trying to make them principals. We're not trying to make them assistant principals, but we would like to help them with their leadership and PLCs and embracing collaboration with our colleagues. We expect to do some design thinking work in this model. And we're kind of going to be in that, we've kind of prototyped it out. We're going to test it. We're going to test it at that first one. We're going to gain some input, and then we'll come back and develop the next session. Also, you might have seen a little bit of this with North Belton Middle School's open house, which was not like any other open house you've seen before. It was a gigantic tailgate party. And, you know, I went out to meet with Mr. Brown, and he had kind of prototyped it. He had this whole map on his desk, and he was showing me how he had drawn out where tents were going to be and who was going to be where. And he'd, you know, gotten this idea from, from his folks on his campus, and then they tested it. And there's no better way to test it than to do it. And from, anytime you test something, you get feedback. Sometimes you get positive feedback, sometimes you get suggestive ways to improve. And so he's going to take that feedback, and then he'll decide what to do with it for the next year. But that's exactly what we want. We want, it's not going to be perfect every time you do something. But the goal is to be innovative and to try new things and to see how that meets the needs of our staff and our kids, and then to keep testing that. And Rochelle will talk a little bit more about that. Another coursework that we have going on, and you've heard quite a bit about, is our social-emotional learning initiative. This is formed out of the KESL model. So we're looking in these five areas to complete activities for self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. And within that, we've been doing quite a number of activities, and now we have Dr. Warren on board, who's going to really lead to take us to the next level of in-depth work. To just name kind of some of our work around this area, we have No Place for Hate, which all of our campuses other have the designation. We have one campus completing that this year. We work with our Avid program. Christina Flores is leading that this year, and we're really looking to continue to refine that program and how we support our students to specifically target at our economically disadvantaged students to take, ensure they're taking higher-advanced courses. Our digital citizenship is that next picture. And so we're challenged today in this world to not only teach students how to act and behave in a physical classroom, but how to act and behave in a virtual one. And so this is Digital Citizenship Week coming up, and we do a lot of work around safe environments, no cyberbullying, how to have a social presence. And that work is continuously challenging as the world around us changes at a very fast pace. We have the three bullets, dots you've seen before. That's David's Law. That's the No Cyberbullying. We have the speaker come out and work with our administrative staff before school starts. And we've had campuses, I think we talked with you at, when we highlighted South Belton Middle School and their work there, and really trying to continue to work with our students to understand the importance of their social presence specifically around cyberbullying. We've done a lot of interactive circles and work with our students. They're called Con- They're called concentric circles, but some, we've put a focus on instructional strategies in the classroom that hear multiple voices and challenge kids to think and share. We've had social emotional learning training for now almost three years with all of our administrators through the Anti-Defamation League to continue, for them to lead work on social emotional learning with their staff. And then also to, we've had a number attend the Momentous Institute in Dallas where they can see work done on a large scale. And then, Dr. Warren has a focus group. She has 23 teachers, administrators, and counselors who are going to be coming together. Their first meeting is going to be October 24th, where they are going to come together and specifically talk about next-level work, work on the campuses. So many of our campuses are already starting initiatives. I see some in the classroom that talk about empathy, kindness, working with others, getting others' perspectives. And so, she'll be leading that work. And then we've got a campus, and we shared this with you in a previous presentation, but I wanted to just put that back in because it's a really great example. This came from South Belton Middle School. And its counselor developed lessons on this essential question where what are the possible long-term effects of harassment, bullying, and cyberbullying? And this is a conversation that was held in classrooms with students. And so, really bringing to the forefront that we need to talk about these things and how we get along with one another and being, recognizing what those differences are. And then our last piece of work that I'm going to talk about tonight, remember this is just a piece of that goal. It's not everything we're doing, is self-management. It's about our students being safe, responsible, and respectful. And so, when you look at our educational system, and this is a visual from Emergentree, and you can see in the middle that that tall trunk is the equivalent to our curriculum. And, you know, we have a strong viable curriculum in place. And it branches out into all those leaves with all of the differentiated instruction that our teachers have for our students. It's founded in a strong root system. And that strong root system are behavioral supports and systems that are in place so that kids can learn. And we have to address that. And we have to address the varying needs of what our students bring to the table. And so through that, we have created a strong foundation with our Safe and Civil Schools work. We have spent a lot of time with our foundations and our CHAMPs programs, where we've focused on rules for common spaces. How do you maneuver into the halls? How will you act in the gym? What are the rules for the cafeteria? Just these strong, shared space and common rules. And that's been, we've been using that for several years. We have conscious discipline that we're focused on, focusing on. And that complements Safe and Civil Schools, but it's really targeted at the pre-K level and is focused with our work at BEX. And then, Emergentree has brought together our work for Bridges and our AIMS work. Let me see if that's, and so with our Bridges work, and it was in your, it's not here, but it was in your packet there, we conducted a universal screener for the first time. We've never done that before. And we had all of our campuses, with the exception of Belton High School, implement that screener. And that wasn't intentional, because we haven't done it before. We wanted to test it with our elementary and middle school. And what our teachers did was, and it's, again, it's going to be somewhat subjective, but they were to rate each of their students on three questions. And they had, they were to rate on, is the students, does the student feel safe? Does the student implement safe behaviors and actions that are in physical nature? So they stay in their assigned seat, they keep their hands and their feet to themselves, they walk with a purpose? Or maybe they're out of their assigned seat often, they horseplay? And so they would rate students from a one to five, which would be almost never safe to almost always safe. Then they would rate their students on responsible behaviors. So is, do they always bring their supplies? Do they use their personal items appropriately? Do they complete their assignments? That would show responsibility, again, that same quick ranking. And then the final ranking is, are they respectful? So do they use appropriate tone and volume? Do they use appropriate language? Do they listen to others? Do they talk in turn? And once they rated those students, and this is from one teacher's perspective at the elementary, that's usually they have one, maybe two teachers. When it was at the middle school, it was one of their teachers, I believe it was their, there's like their tiger time group. Then all that data would be compiled and run through an algorithm. And Emergentree has met with our principals to show where our students rank in terms of low-risk, middle-risk, and high-risk students. And that's important because we've always had these three-tier behaviors. But now we have an official kind of ranking of all. And so, you sometimes knew who your high-risk students were, but maybe you hadn't gotten that teacher's, every teacher's perspective. And so this really let you into the lens, into that classroom. And this has been a great tool for our students, for our campuses. They just finished their first coaching session, so this is new work for us. And what the system has done is it's told you within your campus where your students lie. Now, we would love to have campuses where 100% of the students are in Tier One and are, you know, everything's working for them, but that's not realistic. What's realistic is that about 80% to 85% of your students should be there. And if, when that survey was done, you found that about 85% of your students were there, then you know you're right where you need to be and your Tier One is working, just like it needs to be. If you found that you didn't quite have that number, then that was a great message to the campus. Hey, I need to revisit Tier One. I need to revisit all those procedures for my common spaces, my classroom behaviors. I need to revisit my CHAMPs work. Then they looked at Tier Two, and it kind of put in an algorithm, that next tier, which would be about 15, 10 to 15%. And again, if you weren't quite in that range, then you needed to look at your Tier Two work. And Tier Two work is Bridges. What Tier Two does is it gives a second intervention. It's no longer about all the kids. It's no longer about all the shared spaces. It's about targeted interventions for specific kids. It's implementing daily behavior charts. It's implementing a check-in, checkout process for students. And it's implementing a plan that I'm going to work with you and your behavior. And again, depending on if you're there or not, you know if I need to really beef up my Tier Two. And then Tier Three, we really, we hope to see 3% to 5%, and not more than that. And that's where we have implemented, as we talked with you last year about, for those of you that weren't here, solid roots training that we implemented specifically for our highest need students. Many times, you will find students that are in our AIMS in that area. And that's just the highest level of need. And that's, and if we're outside where we need to be as a campus, then if we have too many students in our Tier Three, we want to go back and visit our Tier Two. And we really want to strengthen that. And so, for the first time, we've had all these great strategies, but now we've really got a strong tiered system and we've got some data to support that and for campuses to really evaluate. The kids that are identified in here are talking points. So sometimes they get kids in, then they can talk about, well, you know, is there things we need to help specific students with? Or maybe they've shown, you know, it's a one-time. It doesn't define student forever. But it does give the campus, and they have a team. We've trained a team, and so they know what to look for. And then through our Emergentree, they have continual support. So when they get their data back, if they have questions, if they see things change, if things aren't working, then they have support where they can immediately reach out to some of our specialists through Emergentree and will support them. And all of this work is helping us, and this chart goes back to, again, those three programs that may, you know, our CHAMPs work, and then our Bridges work, and then our solid roots. And all of these systems are working together to help us build that strong root foundation so that our kids are prepared to learn. And we feel like these are probably our three biggest work right now around our goal to address and meet supportive cultures. Questions? I know there's a lot in there.
Do you plan to then do Belton High School in the near future?
So they are. Belton High School is going to come on board with their universal screener in the spring. It's a challenge to think through 2,900 students and then also which teacher. But they already have the programs in place. So they're already using Bridges support. They're using the solid roots. They have CHAMPs. They have all the programs. They just haven't implemented the universal screener, but they are. They're very supportive of the work.
So every teacher in the district has been through this training?
So, no, that's a great question. Not every teacher has been through the training. We trained teams from every campus to know how to use the data and then to talk through how to rate students and how to get through those. And, you know, there's some subjectivity in that, no doubt about it. But we feel like it's over time that will work itself out.
It's a train, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rosie.
Will you do a second data point collection? Because now you've got the individual campuses that probably have a different-looking triangle.
Yes, yes.
Will there be a second?
Yes, I apologize. I didn't tell you about that. There actually will be two more. There is a mid-rating, and that's going to, we're still kind of working out where, we think we'll get that done probably before Christmas. I'm looking at, or January. I think it's January 22nd. Somewhere right around there. I'm looking at Rochelle because she's been working on that with us. And then we'll do another, a third one in April. We're looking at right after Star, Easter holiday, before the end of school year. And that'll give kind of three points. And then, you know, over time, it'll, you'll start to see a trend. Campuses can identify their own trend and identify where they need to work. And it'll help pinpoint, is it, you know, teachers that need support with specific classrooms and students? Is it individual students that need support? Is it the whole program on the campus for implementation needs support? There's a lot of variables in that. I think what is the most exciting is for us is that there is a strategy for having those conversations and making sure they are thinking about all those variables.
It's about the conversation and trying something different, right? When I was a young teacher, I was struggling with some discipline issues in my classroom. And I love to tell this story because I, you know, was complaining about students. And, you know, I've got all these hard kids in my classroom and really struggling. And my principal looked at me and just said, try something different. And that's it, right? It's analyzing data and figuring out what you can do differently to help the kids. And that's the idea behind the design thinking process, too, is that you're generating some ideas to solve your problems. And so this system has some ideas in that toolbox for teachers and so that we don't get stuck in a rut doing the same thing over and over.
And so, first of all, thank you for the detail because I love, I love when we really know what's going on. And all of that, that's very helpful to us to really sink our teeth into. But also what I really like about this is that ultimately, what I'm hoping it is, is it's, it's a, everyone's going to work together. You know, upper administration and teachers, and then the kids will take their part as they begin to learn some strategies. And hopefully, we can, we can get it up to that Tier One. You know, we can keep, we can move that direction. And everybody will be on the same page to work that way. Instead of people, I don't know what to do. I don't have any strategies, or I don't feel like I have any support. It sounds like you are trying to help teachers, you know, come up with a plan and also know that they have support if things are complicated, so.
We are. And I do want to, I want to give a shout out to our principals on this. I think they deserve it because, you know, sometimes when you talk about new initiatives and it's going to be a lot of work, and there's going to be some meetings and some trainings, you might not always have just, you know, joyfulness following that reception. Our principals have been amazing. They want this. They will do everything they can to help a kid. And we have some challenging students, and we are in it together. And we are looking at each other sometimes and going, I don't, I don't know what else. Let's try. And they have embraced this work when we suggested giving a universal screener. I mean, you know, imagine, you're going to go back and tell 50 teachers, I want you to rate every one of your students. It won't take long. It's going to be, you know, they wanted it. It wasn't even about, let me convince you. It was like, sure, let me sign up. And I want to be real, you know, clear, Belton High School is on board, too. We had to put them on hold. And, but they have embraced this work. And they've been excited about it because they want every kid to be, I mean, I don't want to be cliché, but they want every kid to be a winner. And we've got some kids that struggle behaviorally. And so, I do kind of publicly shout out to them because it has been a lot of work. And they have just, they're wonderful in supporting it.
So the team, that's, thank you for that. The teams that have been trained, so they're now in a position to train other folks on their campus?
They are. So they have a team that looks at the data. That's typically your principal, your assistant principals, your counselor. You might, if you have an AIMS campus, you're going to have your AIMS teachers in there, maybe some lead teachers. I mean, they've got a team that's looking at the data, that's been trained in the data. And then they're explaining that to their campuses and their teachers. And then we will have more ongoing training. So I anticipate having some breakout sessions at one of our next big PDs to keep our teachers going. But campuses have been owning that work with them and sharing that data.
So just want to follow up a question. I think you're making this point already. So the individual campuses, as they do their design thinking, you're not changing the operational definition of the universal screener, but you might define safety on that campus based on the data and the design thinking. So they then have a variable that's more tangible?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Individual goals with kids?
Yes. Yep. Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Dr. Lesmith.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we are going to discuss campus culture, spotlights, BEX, Southwest, and North Belton Middle School. Dr. Warren is going to tell us all about that good stuff.
Thank you for that. It is good stuff. So, we are, again, going to spotlight some of our campuses. And just want to remind you all that all of our campuses are going to have their moment in the spotlight where we are really shining a light on what they've already been doing, how they're taking things that were introduced to them during beginning of the school year PD, along with the energy on their own campuses to design some things that are going to impact their cultures in a really positive way. And so, we are, tonight, starting with our early childhood campus, BEX. And if you'll look at the demographic information, essentially, it is one grade, but there are some programmatic differences. So the preschool for, preschool program for children with disabilities has 46 students in it. Our pre-K program has 357. And then there are 27 students who are paying tuition for attendance at BEX. And as Dr. Lesmith mentioned, these spotlights are really focusing on campus cultures. So for BEX, Ms. Banfield said that pretty much from the moment the campus was opened, social emotional learning has been a priority. And part of that is, that's how the state really sets up the pre-K program. But a lot of it came from the staff and their belief that a child's social emotional learning really influences the rest of their educational progress. So with that as a guiding light, they made an intentional decision to employ conscious discipline because it allows students to assert themselves in appropriate ways and to accomplish meaningful tasks without infringing on the rights of others, which is a wonderful thing we want all of our students to learn. And why not start them when they're three or four years old? And as you mentioned, or you heard just a little bit ago, it aligns well with stuff that we're already doing in the district. So conscious discipline is a particular focused strategy that supports our Safe and Civil Schools work, and it connects also with Bridges, which is looking at And it connects also with Bridges, which is looking at those students who need some kind of targeted intervention. So in looking at conscious discipline, it really, from the teacher perspective, seems to set the foundation for handling conflict throughout the day. So it's something that is referenced frequently throughout the day. There are routines that are built in. Parents indicated on a campus survey that their children are transferring what they're learning at school home. An example of that is that we have our youngest students who are taking a moment to breathe when they get upset at home before making decisions about what happens next so that they can maintain their calm. There are multiple routines that are built into this. And I will say, I had the pleasure of witnessing some of this in action in Ms. Bradley's room. And I encourage all to take a moment and drop in when they're doing this focus session because it's amazing what our students are doing. But routines like the wish well, safe place, breathing and connection rituals from our students. So from our youngest students, we heard things like, "We put them, other students who may be absent that day, in our heart and sing to them." "If you're angry, you can come to the safe place." "When you are a balloon, you feel better." "I like to hug my friend. It helps me make friends." So these are the kinds of things that they're learning through the routines that are embedded within conscious discipline, that are embedded into their regular routine. So this isn't necessarily something that they view as separate. It is simply part of a regular day for them. So their ongoing expectations as a result of the use of conscious discipline include students learning to use the big voice, which I'm going to explain in just a moment from one of our other campuses. We want our students to gain empathy, to learn how to self-regulate their emotions, their thoughts, feelings and actions, and really just to internalize SEL skills that will serve them throughout their lifetimes. So from what's happening at BEX, Southwest Elementary is our next spotlight school. And they are actually going to build on what our pre-K students experience. Here is the demographic picture of them. From the moment Mrs. Cox heard about conscious discipline, she really felt that that was something that would benefit her students. But when she got to see it in action during instructional rounds, which is another one of our common practices here in the district, that's when she actually sought some like-minded staff members on her campus to get some folks interested in piloting it at Southwest. So the long-term plan is to have conscious discipline throughout the campus, so serving all students K through five. They are starting with kindergarten because they arrive on campus already well-trained in conscious discipline with the language in place and routines already part of what they expect to do. Similarly to BEX, parents and teachers and students are really pleased with how things are going so far. The use of big voice, which is the ability to state your concerns instead of whining, is especially appreciated at both home and school. And adding to Southwest's focus of... On creating a culture of mutual respect that encourages others and intentional positive interactions with students. They also held a family engagement night. And what you see there are some of our Belton High School football players who were there probably just to do a rah-rah kind of thing, but instead took an active leadership role and jumped right in, demonstrating some games that students and parents can do at home. So all of these together is, again, emphasizing the importance of making those connections between school and home so that we have that seamless culture. North Belton Middle School, by the numbers, demographically. As Dr. Love Smith mentioned, the staff had a moment of clarity while doing design thinking work at the admin retreat this summer and felt compelled to rethink the traditional open house. And what they wanted to do is replace issues or concerns like crowded hallways or rushed atmosphere with something that was more family-friendly and something that really the entire family could participate in. So there would be no need for a babysitter or no need to rush through this because she got to get to something else, but really allowing families an authentic opportunity to engage with campus staff. So from that process came the tailgate open house. And in this more relaxed, open setting, whole families were able to interact with the North Belton Middle School staff. There were games sponsored by National Junior Honor Society students. There were food trucks from local vendors. There was a visit from some of our first responders. A fire truck came. And in this sense, the core of what they were hoping to accomplish did happen. They wanted to have a memorable welcoming event that was attended by various members of their greater community in a way that they could interact together. And what I hope you're seeing as we go through all of these things is that our campuses are really being very deliberate and strategic and thoughtful in their efforts to weave together design thinking, social-emotional learning and student self-management to ensure that all of our students have a safe, inclusive learning environment. So we'll have some more campuses in that spotlight in upcoming meetings.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I've got my what-if hat on. I don't know what... So, I mean, I've often thought, you know, we teach... We do a lot of great stuff in the schools, right? But how much of that... how do we engage the parents on this, right? So the parents in these campuses, how do they know what's going on? You know, is this communicated to them in any way? You know, if it's being communicated, maybe I... I don't know. Maybe my wife gets it. I don't know. But yeah, I mean, how does that happen? Or does it happen to the parents?
It definitely happens. And it's dependent on the campus and the particular event or activity. But in each one of the cases that we were talking about tonight, there is a very deliberate effort to engage parents and to find out if it's working because we want things to be right on campus, of course. But we don't want it to be the kind of thing where we might get incredible input from our students or behavior from our students during the school day, but somehow it's lost as the last bell of the day rings. It's also really important for us to know what our parents are wanting and what their expectations are. So in last month's spotlight, I mentioned how South Belton Middle School had done a survey that they were going to be using to help them refine their social-emotional learning lessons that they were doing through their advisory period. So there is this feedback loop that is happening.
Thank you, Dr. Warren.
I want to just say, these are really big initiatives. Like big hairy audacious goals, right? We... to accomplish these and really proud of our staff for really engaging in the work. And, you know, just something as simple as open house is really not that simple. Having done this a long time, we've always done open house the same way in our middle schools from even when I was an educator. So to step out there and try something new is really important and for us to be able to adapt and change with our students and our families. So really super proud of our leaders for engaging in some design thinking and really trying to be innovative and try something new with their students. And so appreciate you guys.
Yeah, I want to say, Mr. Brown, I want to say thank you for sticking to your guns on the open house, by the way. Right? I know it was a little controversial leading up to it, but it really did go really well. So, yeah.
Okay, next up, we will review and discuss the gifted and talented evaluation at Advanced Academics program update by Christina Flores and Dr. Love Smith.
And I'm not going to do the majority of talking on this one. I'm going to turn it over, but before we do, we wanted to just... I wanted to tie it in to our district goal and to give another little shout out. So this goal was led by Superintendent Dr. Kinkanen. And she made it a priority and a challenge for our department that we would, in fact, advance our highest performers. And when that message comes from her, and Christina is our coordinator of Advanced Academics, and she makes all of this work happen within our team, but she leads this work. And she's going to talk to you specifically about our growing Superintendent Scholars programs. And as much as any one of us would advance performers when they hear the superintendent matters to her and that they're her people, parents listen and the number grows. And so this has become very, very important intentional work. We've always been doing it, but there is an intensity with that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christina Flores, Coordinator for Advanced Academics. And she's going to talk about her program.
I just want you to know, they're fighting for that Superintendent Scholar recognition. It is unreal. I'm loving it. All right, so this is Gifted and Talented Education. This is a group of students from our GT camp this past summer. Yes, this is summer. Yes, they are engaged and they are having fun. So we really had a great time this summer with those students. This is our end of the year numbers for 2017-18. So we have Kinder with 44. So a lot of times when you see our numbers, we do not have Kinder in our numbers because we do not start looking at those until December and we place them around March. So in the district, as we ended last year, we had 1,196 gifted and talented students, which gave us a 10.3% of the district student population. So I just want to keep in mind, this was end of the school year. Numbers will look different for this school year. So this is our gifted and talented students by population. You can kind of see where we are in this past year versus where we were. Demographics look about the same. However, there are two things I'd like to mention. One, we did have a decrease in our white population with being GT. Due to just different reasons, we may have another sub-pop in there with being two or more, which is not listed. Or they have exited the program with being seniors or furloughs during the junior high years. The other thing I want to look at is... Is our Hispanic numbers. That's kind of something that we want to look at. We want to make sure that our GT data is comparable to the district data. So we're looking at our Hispanic numbers and our economically disadvantaged numbers and trying to address how we need to fix those areas. So one of the things that we did do this past year is we did second grade testing. We did a screener and we did that at four campuses. We did that at Chisholm Trail, Leon Heights, Miller Heights and Southwest. And so out of those four campuses, we identified 38 students. Out of those 38 students, we identified 16 of those were Hispanic. So we are working, trying to find different ways to address those needs and try and make sure that they get identified as well. The next is GT testing placement. So we tested a total of 421 students. Quite a big jump this past year. One of the things that I did when I came in is I met with everybody that did our placement committees and I spoke with them about what we're looking for. In the past, we've had scheduled windows for campuses to send in their packets. And some of them are in September and October. And that's kind of early to know whether a student is GT and needs to be tested or not. So one of the things I did encourage is to send them. When you get one and you see one, have the parents fill out their packets. Let's have the teachers fill out everything and let's get it to my office so that we can fit them into our testing windows. So we did see quite a bit of increase. And we've done a lot of training this year to look at what GT students look like. And they're not all just high achievers. So that's one of the things we're looking at. So from our 421 that we tested, we had 232 that we placed. Two things I'd like to note here is our Hispanic numbers. We had 108 students that we tested and 52 of those were placed, so that was quite exciting. And our economically disadvantaged, we had 232 and we placed 83. So every year, we have to do a district and campus GT evaluation by the Texas State Plan. And under that, we are rated in five different areas and each campus self-evaluates themselves. The only part that they don't self-evaluate is at the district level. And at the end of the school year, I have the GT Parent Advisory Committee work on our rating as a district. So as you see here, this is our rating from our committee this past year. We are in the exemplary category. And then if you look at the bottom, you have our campuses and how they self-evaluated themselves. We had one acceptable, four recognized and nine exemplary. I do look at each one of these and look at their comments. Some of the ways I'm addressing some of their concerns is we're doing the second grade screener. So that was one of them. And then the other thing that we are doing, I'm piloting a program. It's called Genius Hour, but we're kind of redesigning it to be all Genius Hour because everybody needs it. And we have just started some of the projects at each campus. So we're looking at the individual needs of each student. And so that's what we're working on. So Advanced Academics. We currently have 21 advanced placement courses, which means that's 1,730 credits for AP courses. That's pretty exciting. And I also want to note that most of these are taken, they're junior and senior year. So our juniors and seniors have a really healthy course flow if they decide to take all those courses. Looking at our AP exams, this year we gave 791 exams to 404 students. And of those students, 250 scored a three or higher. So we're looking at a three or higher as the passing rate. You can get a three, four or five. So at the bottom, you're going to see our numbers. We had 61% of our students with that passing rate. Texas is at 52% and at the national level, they're 61%. So we are scoring right with the nation and quite higher than Texas. Moving on to pre-AP, we have 26 pre-AP classes. And that's 8,357 enrollments in pre-AP classes in our district. I'm quite excited. And then we also partner with three institutions, one being Temple College, University of Mary Harden, Baylor and UT Permian Basin. We also have the option of students attending Texas Bioscience Institute. That's TBI under Temple College. So we offer 24 dual-credit courses, which is 608 three-hour credits. At the bottom, you also see how many students we have in TBI. We have 21 students, which is quite higher than in years past. Advanced Academics achievements. It's a little squirrely. Okay, so we have Duke TIP students. Those are our seventh grade students that qualify based on their last two years of STAR tests, meaning they got a 95 or higher on one of their STAR tests or they have an IQ of 125 or higher. These are our Duke TIP students from last year. We had 145 students reach that. 56 decided to test either taking the ACT or the SAT. As a seventh grader. As a seventh grader. We had 19 qualify for state recognition. That means that they are scoring comparable to high school seniors. We had three of those seventh graders score 90 in the 90th percentile of high school seniors. It was absolutely amazing. I got to go with them to Texas A&amp;M where they were recognized and it was an amazing experience. With that, they had 20 qualify for Academy for Summer Studies and then a Center for Summer Studies. So at that point, they say that you can either go to a university here in Texas or you can go to Duke and can do all kinds of different things through Duke TIP. So going back to AP, we have 103 AP scholars earning college level. So I think it was August we were recognizing them. A lot of them ended up graduating, so we didn't get to see a lot of them. 52 of those scored a three or higher on three or more exams. So they took three exams and passed those three. We had 23 that scored a 3.25 or higher on all exams and a three or higher on four or more exams, getting more technical here. We had 28 of... We had 28 of those scoring a 3.5 or higher on all exams and a three or higher on five or more exams. That's a lot of exams. And then I'm just going to stop here with the six. They scored a four or higher on all exams and scores a four or higher on eight or more exams. Wow, very, very talented. And some of those students, those six, you saw up here earlier tonight. So if you're going to do a comparison, you can see that our AP scholar numbers are increasing. I do want to note, if you were to add up that column, it's not going to add up to 103. And the reason why is because your national AP scholars are in that AP scholars with distinction number. Okay? So they qualify in both of those areas. Okay, Superintendent Scholars. So I'm just going to take a moment for just a second because when I was hired, I started, my first day was like July 1st or after the holiday or something. But I got a phone call in June, and it was Deanna, and she says, "I have a group of students, they're called the Superintendent Scholars. They're going to be meeting with Dr. Kinkanen, and we would like you to be there." And I was like, "Uh, okay." I mean, like, do you say no? Like, you can't say no, right?
I know you haven't started yet.
So I came up and we sat with these students, Dr. Kinkanen, myself, Deanna. We sat with them, and we said, "Okay, what can we do for you guys? We know that you're in all of these AP classes. What can we do for you guys to help you with the PSAT?" And so they wrote up a plan. We talked, they wrote up a plan, we met back, and we said, "Okay, we can do this, this, and this. We can't do this." But we basically put in a program for them to help them be successful and to mentor them and to give them that extra help.
They wrote the plan.
They did write the plan.
They were so smart. These kids right here, Sarah actually went back and led the group. And I said, "Y'all go write it." Because they had all kinds of ideas, and they did. They came back and presented it and did it themselves, so it was pretty cool.
And we met on Saturdays, we worked together on exams. I mean, we did all kinds of things. And in the end, when, by the time I was hired, by the time they take the test in October, so beginning of October, because we just took the PSAT, there wasn't very much time. And although I enjoyed spending a lot of time with them, I just need more time to grow some of the students and really work with them. So after we came back after that time, I asked Dr. Kinkanen, I said, "Hey, can we just look at looking at our eighth grade results, our ninth grade results, and our 10th grade results? And maybe look at those high-performing kids so I can start working with them at an earlier age?" And she said, "Absolutely." So what you're going to see up here is there's a big increase because we were just looking at our 10th graders going into 11th grade. So we had 32 2016, 2017, and then this year I have 92 that I'm working with. Okay? So with that, we've talked about CON Academy. I show them how to get on CON. We link their College Board accounts. We have study sessions, we do individual tutorials depending on what's going on. They have me in their ears a lot. And then the top five scores, we're very lucky for Beef. They give our top five PSAT scores a $5,000 scholarship at the very end. So when we put our next Superintendent Scholars in, they will be recognized. And so you can kind of see our efforts in what happened this past year with our commended scholars and our national Hispanic scholars. First time we've really seen that national Hispanic scholar recognition, which I'm quite excited about. And then those commended, I'm telling you, a lot of them missed it by one to two points.
Texas has a higher standard for national merit.
So some of them asked me if they could move, you know? And they were like, "In August, can I move to a different state so I know that I'll make it?" And I was like, "No, you've got to stay here with me," so.
They absolutely would have been.
And maybe their parents.
National merit scholars in a different state, yes. It's a cutoff point for every state.
We're at 222 is our index score, and we have a lot, 220, 221, so. These are actual scores from last year. Our new scores do not come out until October 17th. Today is October 15th. So they will be coming out, but I do want to know, want y'all to know that our composite SAT score for the district, right, for this past year, is a 1085, so it has increased. What's also interesting to note is that if they took the essay as well, their score is 1114. So if they decided to take the essay with it, the scores are quite a bit higher. So next steps, we've already started a lot of these next steps. We did recognize 203 junior scholars this past month. Last month, I had to think what month we were in. 203 students. It was an amazing ceremony. We had Dr. Awir come from UMHB, talk to the students. He was phenomenal. And we do have 50 more students than we did the year before because they know they're being recognized and they know Dr. Kinkanen. They want that picture with Dr. Kinkanen. So SAT and ACT, we're working on curriculum revisions, how to embed that into our curriculum a little bit better. We are still going to continue to do our second grade testing with Gifted and Talented. We are now adding elementary scholars for the Duke TIP. We did do Duke TIP, but we are wanting to expand that and make it more of a big deal for them so they understand what they have achieved so far because it's the same thing. It's the 95% in the last two years of STAR testing and 125 on their IQ. And we have 242 of those students that we will be recognizing at the end of the month. And if you haven't, please go by Twitter or Facebook. Give us a like, say something nice. But I did start that last year, and we're trying to build that this year. So we're just going to keep going with the momentum that we started with, and we're ready for more stuff, more good stuff.
One thing I would add that Christina has done an excellent job with, and I think is important in this work, is that she is connecting the work in a pathway. And so when she met with the junior scholars, and then when she meets with the elementary, those fifth grade parents, she's giving them the greater picture. Your child is on a path for a national merit scholar. There's college money, there's scholarships available, there's acceptance into colleges. And she's giving parents at an earlier age, you know, with a younger child, that picture. And she's had our high school scholars come in and talk with our juniors and talk with the students. And really, it's connecting some dots for parents that they just saw maybe it as an award at this level, but didn't really connect that longer work. And that has been very helpful for our parents. And she also serves as a direct line to parents. They call her with any question they have about college, acceptance, testing, and she walks them through it. So I think that's important for y'all to know as well in this work. Any questions you have for us?
That was Fast and Furious.
Well, thank you, ladies. Appreciate all of that great information. Thank you. Okay, so next, we went to Tasbi, and we had Ms. Janet Lees, who's going to give us an update on the Tasbi Delegate Assembly.
Yes, so I, you know, Ms. Sue Jordan has always been the representative, I think, for the last, well, two years? Okay. And so I asked her, I asked others, "What does it mean to be the delegate at the Delegate Assembly for your board?" And it basically ended up not being a single thing that I thought it was going to be. They handed me this big book, it's a little light bedtime reading, you know? They gave it all to me online, but, you know, that's kind of hard to read online. And then we got there, and I'm looking at, you know, what we're going to be doing, and a friend of mine who is in Holland School Board, we were both like, "Do you know what's going on? Do you know what's going on?" Like, "No, no." And so we actually thought we were going to go in and get to vote on policies. But no, no, you're voting on the wording of policy, which is really fun. We feel like we made some important decisions and adjustments. And we had our little, you know, little counter, little voter, and it was really fun. It was a neat process.
Did you get a frisbee?
I got a frisbee. I gave it to my oldest son. He appreciated it. There were 375 delegates present, and we got to hear from Jimmy Don Akok, who is a former legislator and a strong defender of public education. And he always talks about how many public school kids we have. And that is 5.4 million public school students across the state of Texas. And he talked about the 60-30 rule, which is 60% of our students by 2030 will need an advanced degree, meaning two-to-four-year degree. And so we need to make sure that we're hitting all things for students to make everybody successful by the time that we're going to, our nation and our state are going to need those things. And the other thing that he really drives home, and I know I'm talking to the choir here, but so, you know, for the larger media audience that may hear this or read it, you know, we don't advocate who you vote for. Everybody's got their reasons for who they vote for and why that's important to you personally. But what I would ask is that you just find out what the people that you're going to vote for believe about public schools. Because I will tell you that they are in danger. And we have a lot of people, people that we support, who are not strong advocates for public schools. And I'm not even telling you that you shouldn't vote for them, but what I am telling you is that it would be great if you could at least find out and ask them about it. Talk to them about why they don't or why they do support public schools and get involved in that. And if they feel that pressure from us as concerned parents, teachers, citizens in this community about why it's so important, 5.4 million children depend on it. If we don't educate our public, where will we be? Where will we be? So I just ask you to be active in that process. Just talk to your legislators, senators, representatives, congressmen. Find out what they believe and tell them what you believe.
Thank you, Janet. That's awesome. We also got to attend the convention. And Janet, since you were so eloquent, would you like to just share with us any information that you've learned and love and/or did not love about the convention?
We went to all, we all kind of attended. We weren't all able to go to this one because we all went to the San Antonio one. Of course, you know, Rosie and Manuel are new, so they weren't with us. But Rosie's been before many times, and Manuel joined us this time in Austin. And so we're all getting up to speed on how all of that works. I went to several different sessions. I always learn something a little new. A lot of times, it's certain school districts that are doing something innovative, and they bring their ideas with them and kind of teach you things. And lots of legislative updates about what's going on. Anybody else go to a really fun one? Ooh, don't speak at one.
I wouldn't say fun, but certainly since our board just looks a little different now, I was able to revisit some of the ones that I visited in the beginning, only with a different hat. I was able to go back to like open meetings acts and some of the other new board member stuff I attended with Manuel, just to kind of refresh myself on what it is we do and why we do. So it was a great refresher for me. Anyone else? Manuel, Chris?
It seems kind of strange, but one of my favorite sessions was a session with the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas and just kind of looking at the state of the Texas economy and what that's going to do sort of sector by sector. And one of the particular areas we looked at was housing. And, you know, I could probably talk about this one for 30 minutes, but we're not going to do that. But yeah, just like watching some of the trends from a housing perspective and then looking at what's going on here, right, from an attendance boundary and from a property value standpoint, right, it all kind of linked together. And so it was interesting to see it from that perspective for me. Yeah, I mean, geez, I hit 10 sessions, and, you know, I think there were a couple of sessions I went into really hoping to learn something new. And what I, and I came away with, man, we're doing a good job here. You know, so a lot of the something new, like, we're already kind of, we're already ahead in jumping out in front. And I mean, and that's, right, the group out here, right, you know, really leading the charge. I continue to be so impressed every time I go to one of these conferences with just how on top of it we are and how much we are actually out in front. So thank you very much. It's definitely visible, yeah.
I attended a session on funding of public schools. And my take on that is I'm learning how difficult and how issue-ridden that particular topic is. And one of the things that came up during the meeting today is, you know, our A rating on how we're managing, you know, resources here at this district. And I thought about that session on financing the public education and how well we are managing money in this district, which is, this district should be commended for that because it doesn't happen across the state, as we all know. The other thing that, I attended another session that was, I think is important for every school district in this state, is the safety of our kids. I think Chris and I attended that, and I believe it was at Southlake. The superintendent from Southlake gave a talk on what they're doing there. Of course, they have an abundance of resources in terms of money in that district. But there's a lot of ideas that were shared by that superintendent that I think a lot of districts can use that don't necessarily have the funding. And I think that we're on top of that thing, on that issue. And this district is certainly being proactive instead of reactive, which I think Dr. Kinkanen and I discussed before. And I think this district is on the right track in that regard.
I went to a number of safety sessions to just to kind of get saturated with what's going on across the state. And it is very interesting, the different approaches that are being taken to address safety. So I feel really good about the work that we're doing here. We still have a lot of work left to do to keep pushing forward. But there's certainly, it's certainly an individual plan based on just an assessment of all of the various districts and what they're doing. And so the plan has to be our plan, and it has to work for us with some guidance and, of course, some sound research-based things that all school districts need to do. But it was just fascinating to me to hear from all the various districts and all of the approaches that they're taking. And I think that's a conversation that we'll hear continued for a good while into the future.
I know you're not going to toot your own horn, but I was.
Well, I just thought it was going to be your favorite session.
I was really proud to see the presentations that we put on, right? And, you know, we had four or five presenters, right? So the two of you and Angela and Todd. You all did an amazing job. And the feedback that I heard from other people in those sessions was just outstanding. And so, you know, thank you for all the time and effort that you put into that. It came off really well.
Great, thank you. Well, we got some coffee really early on Saturday morning.
They were in their spot at 7:30 a.m., ready to go.
To be able to get that done, but thank you very much for that. I appreciate it, yeah.
That's awesome, thank you. Okay, we're giving out the last couple of items. Issues, concerns for future agenda or administrative reports. Todd, do you have anything? Manuel? Miss Janet? Whoever your name is over there, Janet, Chris. He was looking at you like, "Who is this?" Jeff, do you know anything? Dr. McCaffrey? Chris? Okay, well, let me identify some future events for you. You may have already have these dates, you may not. October 22nd, we have our Attendance Boundary Meeting. It'll be at the Harris Community Center at 6:00 p.m. November 5th will be the final Attendance Boundary Meeting. That will be back here in the boardroom at 6:00 p.m. November the 8th, we have the FFA Thanksgiving Food Rally at HEB at 6:00 a.m. That's tons of fun. You've got to be at HEB at 6 o'clock in the morning, watching these folks run through. It's a lot of fun. We've been there with.
One first place.
It's a lot of fun. It's a lot, and a great organized event. And then our next regular board meeting, it's going to be November 12th. That's a student holiday and also a Teacher In-service Day. Apologies, but that's the day, that's the only day that was good prior to the Thanksgiving Day holiday. And then I just got this one yesterday or the day before. October the 18th, which is just in a few days, at dusk, we have Burning of the Bee.
Burning of the Bee this week.
Burning of the Bee at 7:00 p.m. And then a homecoming is October the 19th at 7:30.
Yep, this week.
So, well, if there is, go ahead.
Are you going to be here for that board meeting on the 12th? Or are you going to be next door?
Great question. So we are looking, working to be moved to the Pittinjer Fine Arts Center for future. for future board meetings, but we will not be ready by November. Indico has drafted some designs for some potential furniture for the board. But we still need to work through technology equipment and I just don't think we'll make November, maybe December. Yeah.
Maybe.
We'll keep working on that.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Good meeting.